Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the East Burney Wyne Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting for tonight, Thursday, July 21st, 2022. Just a reminder for tonight's agenda, a recording device will be used during this meeting, and we're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment for agenda items, and I'll remind everybody that rules for the conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2008. The time allotted to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Is there any public comment for agenda items?
Mr. Chairman, if I could reserve comment, I know that the agenda reads for new business item number 7A, award of community park bathroom and utility work. We also have a member of Parks and Recreation who would like to speak on that subject.
We'll just pull that down to that 7A item, then.
Thank you.
Okay, so aside from 7A, anybody, anything? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and move on to the minutes of the previous meeting, which I don't believe we have, do we? Okay, all right, so we'll go to treasurer's report and authorization to pay the bills.
I've reviewed it, too.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to approve the payment of the bills and for the payroll during the given period.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll open up for reports, and I'll go to Luke first.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. A very short report this evening. Start with a reminder that we remain in the public comment period for our draft comprehensive plan. This draft is the culmination of over a year of efforts by the Township's Ordnance Task Force Committee and a consultant team. Following this board's action on July 7th, staff distributed the draft to adjacent municipalities, the Downingtown Area School District, and the Chester County Planning Commission. A current draft of the comprehensive plan is available online. The URL is ebrandewine.org/compplan. Video from the July 6th Planning Commission presentation is available on the same site. This website also hosts a forum for public comment on the draft comprehensive plan. The project has been funded in part by a generous vision partnership program grant awarded by the Chester County Planning Commission. There are two upcoming events I'd like to draw attention to. On July 21st, that would be tonight, there is a concert in the park featuring Minerva and Kevin Henry and Peggy Carroll Henry. On August 19th at dusk, there is a movie in the park, and that movie will be Rea and the Last Dragon. Respectfully submitted, Township Manager.
Thank you. Okay, we'll pop right over to building inspectors' reports, and Matt is here, okay, good, so we'll do building reports.
Shall I read the building report?
I don't think, I mean, we all had it, we all looked at it ahead of time, I think we're good, if you guys are okay with that, and we'll go to Matt next.
Thank you. Just like to cover two things within my report. First is earlier this month, the road department repaired the Woodaker Park after damages from the September 21st, 2021 Hurricane Ida. Walking paths which were crushed stone with fabric had washed out during the storm. The surrounding areas that were stabilized with vegetation, they remained in place, so the only areas that really washed out was the areas that were disturbed. So we removed the fabric, and graded the remaining stone for level surface. We placed four loads of topsoil, we seeded and stapled straw matting over the area. We also poured concrete over the stream culvert. And with this report are photos of the work which is complete, but I see the photos in black and white, and it doesn't really do justice, so I can forward those photos to the board on Friday. And we also received a contribution for the repairs to the park from the Board of Directors of the Chester County Community Foundation in the name of Helen and Robert Woodaker, and they are the founders of the original park. And we plan on doing ongoing maintenance there to try and keep the park looking nice throughout its lifetime. I'll skip down to the third item, which is, sooner after the end of the school year, there were numerous street signs stolen and damaged throughout the township. All the signs were actual street names, they weren't speed limit signs or any other signs. Should anyone discover a street sign in their garage, a student's bedroom, or anywhere else, we're interested in that, and the total cost of damages is around $3,000. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt, while we're on the topic of your Township Roadmaster Report, the last meeting that I called in on, as you recall, we were talking about the trail issue on hideaway farms, and your advice was to make hideaway farms on Patriot Lane, not parking on both sides. I had stressed that concern with that, that at the very least, or at the very most, rather, we should only do one side. Since that meeting, I've got numerous phone calls and emails with residents from Patriot Lane saying, take the walking path out of the road, we don't want to park on one side of the road, it's an inconvenience to do that, how could you even think of that? So I would like to, we don't necessarily have to get into it now, but I would like, you know, obviously, they're going to come in, they want to meet with the board, and I wanted to give you time to prepare for that, as well as, I'm assuming the trail is part of the agreement that we have with trails, and it's partially probably through the builder as well?
It's part of the land development plan, yes.
So how, is that even feasible? Or I would assume not, but, I mean, you know, any and all options on the table, they would love to hear it, and I, as I said, I typically don't get this many calls or emails about one topic, but it seems like they want to, they want to be in front of the board on this.
Yeah, I know the Planning Commission tries to develop walking communities, and I think that's why there's trails, so that people are able to, like, circle Patriot, and they do interconnect with their trails that are located, they go out through the wooded area. So, you know, that's, it's a continuous walking area, that's why they were placed where they were. Did you say that they don't want walking trails on the?
If they're going to lose their, now again, this is what I'm getting from a handful of people right now. I don't know what the majority, I don't know what the board's going to say, but I do know that the majority of people are saying that that's going to be a major inconvenience for them, and they would prefer that the walking trails were removed from the road. If that's not, you know, an option, then it isn't, but we'll have to figure that out. But I just wanted you, obviously, to be aware, and I was calling in that day for that meeting, so I didn't have everything in front of me, but I wanted to bring it up at a public meeting that there is an issue with some of the residents.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move it on to the East Burney Wyne Township Police Department, so I'll turn it over to Chief.
Excuse me, may I ask a question before we move off of this? The walking trail is in the roadway, I take it?
It's a spray painted line.
And is that something that was authorized in the final plan?
Yes.
So it's not something that was just willy-nilly painted on the road?
No, correct. The township has taken-
Parking on both sides wasn't taken into consideration, I take it? Or was it also in the plans that you can always have parking on one side?
That's a great question, because I did say to the homeowners, I said that the signs were in there at the conclusion of the final build-out, then, on paper, I, there's nothing that I can think we could do, but if it wasn't, we're adding them after the thought.
Yes, I'm proposing to add them after we've accepted the development streets, so no, they're, part of the land development plan, as far as I'm aware, did not indicate no parking signs-
Bruce was shaking his head, yes.
But there's no parking in walkway areas, I can't remember if there was parking on the opposite side or not.
I would think that would be a crucial fact. And there's no sidewalks, I take it. There's no sidewalks.
These are, these have become the sidewalks, walking on the roadway, and it was an elaborate trail system that you had developed, which was one of their sales-
Tom, just hypothetically, I'm assuming the developer accepted the painted roadway trail versus having to put sidewalks in.
That's correct.
Right, but I think it's important to note that where this project is in its lifecycle is that the right-of-way and the roads have been offered for dedication and accepted by the township. So we're no longer in the realm of, is it a plan amendment, or we have a discussion with the developer on it. The developer built it per plan, and the request, I understand, is to remove a feature of an approved plan that has been offered and accepted by the township. So I would submit that it's impossible to change, but it certainly is contrary to what the planning review and the master plan for the community.
Yeah, and I think that the way that I'm getting the feedback from the residents is, hey, we're okay with the walking trail staying there, we're not okay with losing a whole half of our road to park on, and if the walking trail is there and the signs have been not there for the development for the last six, seven years, and nothing's happened and we've had no problems, why are we jumping to put it in? So I told them I would clearly ask ahead of time, I'm just advising that they want to come to the board and stress opposition to having signs in on the one side. The other issue would be, is there an easement, and I'm assuming the easement carries over into the grass line by five to eight feet on each side as well, and, you know, if it were ever to come to such a thing, that I'm sure if the residents weren't getting their way and a walking trail were to go in on concrete, and it was paid for by the homeowners association or by the homeowners, and it was out of the road, it would solve that problem as well, but I know, clearly, I'm not expecting them to do that either.
Right, so the project we're working on at the moment is drafting an ordinance for the board's consideration that would establish parking rules on newly dedicated roads. It isn't absolutely necessary to designate one or the other side of that as no parking, but I think a homeowner who observed a car parked on the painted trail may be inclined to call the police and say, hey, you know, someone's parking on top of the trail. Without the ordinance specifying that no parking is allowed there, that ticket is not going to be enforceable, it's not in violation of our ordinance. So, yeah, you could keep the status quo, a line painted and no ordinance specifying that there is no parking allowed. I don't think that's best practice, though. I think most people presume when they see a line painted on the side that's for the purpose of pedestrian use, that they should not park there.
Right. Yeah, again, I just wanted to, you know, alert that there's concerns. Okay, any, okay. Chief, sorry, go ahead.
Good evening. Police report for last month, we had 2,170 events recorded for the township, conducted 200 investigations, we had eight criminal arrests, two summary arrests, one warrant arrest, there were 10 traffic accidents investigated, officers issued 145 traffic citations, we issued 65 traffic warnings, and officers logged 9,445 miles patrolled. Correspondence received, we received a thank you from Janet Doane at East Burney Wyne Baptist Church for helping in the planning of their food truck fest event, and we have a thank you from resident Alice Wilcox, officer stopped by her grandson's birthday party and put on a show for him, so it was appropriate. And that's it.
Thank you. And Chief as well, from the fire company.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The fire company report for the month of June, we responded to a total of 53 incidents for the month. 23 of those were fire-related, 30 of those were medical-related. We went to 14 fire calls, 22 medical calls in East Burney Wyne Township, three fire calls, eight medical calls in West Burney Wyne Township, and two fire calls in Upper Euclid. We went mutual aid once to Honeybrook, once to Valley, and twice to Wallace. Had an average number of 11 people per call. Our fuel usage for the month was, East Burney Wyne Township, 182.7, and West Burney Wyne, 60, for a total of 242.7. We had no fire damage, injuries, or fatalities for the month. We did have three training events with an average number of 22 people in attendance per training night. Just a couple of quick things to note on for the board, something very exciting for the fire company. Last evening, we signed a contract to solidify the agreement to purchase a new rescue truck that will take delivery in 2024. That's been in our budget on our replacement cycle for every year, so the sense of urgency, though, is shortage with materials, price increases, and the time, the amount of time it's going to take to build the truck, so it's going to take 18 to 24 months for them to build the truck. So just for replacement standpoint, we had to order it now, so we can actually get it when we need it. The current truck is costing us a substantial amount of money for maintenance, almost $25,000 to $30,000 a year, so we felt the need that we needed to go ahead and sign that contract last night. We've been working on that behind the scenes in conjunction with the building project, so that was something very exciting, and our members are very proud of, so I wanted to let you guys know about that, and then the building project is moving along as planned, hopefully will be done shortly. The upstairs most likely will not be done until early October, and that's due to the elevator being delayed until the middle of September. So hopefully, the entire downstairs is done and ready to go by the end of August, but that's the fire company's report.
Thank you, and the station looks fantastic, especially now that has the siding on it, it's not smurf blue anymore.
Right.
Okay, so I want to turn it over, we did have the Planning Commission meeting, oh, I'm sorry, special meeting minutes.
And then the June's?
Yeah, so the May 17th Planning Commission Special Meeting Minutes, and we'll just do them both, and the June Planning-
Right, I was going to say, I make a motion to accept the May 17th and a June 1st.
I'll second.
Planning Commission Minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all business, I'll turn it back over to Luke again for the Budget Committee application.
Staff has been marketing the opportunity to serve on the Budget Committee for approximately 30 days now. I'm pleased to report that we have a fourth applicant for the board. Staff intends to email the three members that were appointed at the last meeting and this member, if the board opts to appoint this member tomorrow, in order to set the first meeting date of the Budget Committee and to start the 2023 budget process tomorrow. So the candidate's name is Ronald Lombardi from Noward Drive, and at the board's pleasure, may elect to appoint Mr. Lombardi to serve as the fourth member of the Budget Committee.
I make a motion, we appoint Mr. Lombardi as the fourth member of the Budget Committee.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's done, and I'll turn it back over to Luke. Luke, you might as well just keep talking for the rest of the night, go ahead.
Well, I have a partner on this one, this is item 7A, which is the award for the community park bathroom. I have the Parks and Recreation liaison to that project, Dave Summers, joining to speak on the subject, and I see Sandy is here as well. The agenda item appears is award, the contract, the community bathroom contract, site and utility work contract. That language was written before we had opened the bids. I am sorry to report that we received only two bids, and that the apparent low bidder had a bid for the base components of this project of $267,400. So this would be just the site work to prepare for a prefabricated building that would be purchased from Co-Stars. If you will recall, I had made a presentation to a previous board representing that the overall cost of the project would be approximately $330,000, and that we had located other sources of revenue, specifically a DCNR grant equivalent to approximately $165,000, and funding commitments from both the, from the foundation and from EBYA equal to about $50,000 each. Obviously, with just the site work costing $267,000, that makes, is massively over budget. So my recommendation is to neither reject all bids nor award to the apparent low bidder pending a review by our engineer and a proposal for means to perhaps get less expensive bids. And with that, I welcome other perspectives.
I guess I have to do the name thing still? No? Okay, then. When Luke and the engineer forwarded those bids on to all of us, and I forwarded them on to our Park and Rec Board member, I felt like that kid in the horror movies, that his head spins around. We've been working on this project for pushing six years now, and this year, we finally were able to get a well in the ground, and, you know, the six-year thing, five years, that's a whole other, I'm not going into the weeds on that tonight, but I'm in Luke's court, and so are the other members of the board, to reject all the bids, because if you had an opportunity to look at them, they're horrendous, they're absurd, it's crazy. Half a million dollars for a 30 by 24 building?
$895 a square foot.
Yes.
For the building.
Yeah, it's just crazy. I, you know, I think we need to look at another option somehow, whether we try to do some of it in-house. The lead engineer on the project is away for a couple of weeks, so I'm not sure he saw the bid, but I spoke with one of the other engineers from Pinone, and they just, they have no answer for it either, but it's just, they're ridiculous. But, that said, we already have a lot of time, a lot of money, and a lot of effort in this project, and I don't want to see it go away. It's a need, it's not really a want. You know, we're trying to replace the continuing cost of porta-potties, and, you know, for our park to look nice, do away with the porta-potties and have a building. But, you know, this is, I think we have to look at maybe other options, total options of, you know, how we do the construction, and maybe even the building, I don't know, but, you know, I'm certainly going to try to work with Pinone a little more aggressively. I, that's about all I can say on that matter. But, you know, the other part of that is, you know, I look at other things that we're doing in the township globally, and, you know, our guys do a fabulous job, and I know they could do a fabulous job on this. I've known Matt for a long time, Matt does nice work, his guys do nice work. And, you know, maybe we need to really look at, concentrate on expanding that group and giving them the tools that they need to do these kind of projects. You know, I know they're way behind on certain things, and, you know, it is what it is. You know, I understand, there are a lot of different things that happen, and, you know, things happen, and you have to, he has to take care of them, but we don't want this project to go away, and we would like your continued support, whatever that might be at whatever time. EBYA is verbally going to continue their support for the $50,000, and, you know, the foundation monies that we generate from the golf outings and other events that we can contribute to the foundation, you know, as far as I know, everyone will continue to do that, but this is one of those projects I think we just, we need to focus a little more aggressively on to get completed in some fashion, so, I don't-
David, I couldn't agree with you more, and it's refreshing to hear your, the Parks and Rec side say the exact same thing, that, you know, we're stewards of public money, and-
We are, I have, you know-
You've been down this road before, you were supervisor-
A half a million, it's a half a million dollar bathroom.
Yep, and I remember when Henderson High School did the exact project, it was in the papers for weeks, and they heard about it, so trust me, I know.
Not being a construction person like Jason and Kyle, but I have some experience. Hands are tied a little because the lead engineer is away on vacation. I thought there were some items in there that were over-engineered, so I had, I've already developed a list of questions for Nate when he returns. An example would be horizontal drilling for an inch and a quarter sewer line versus trenching. I would think the trenching would be a lot less expensive than 1,900 feet of horizontal drilling.
Well, we also have to consider going across the permy driveway and that whole-
I understand, so some places you would do it, but the specs of the bid were all 1,950 feet, when maybe you only need 1,200 feet, or you could do 1,200 feet the other. The building itself is a precast concrete structure, which, you know, theoretically has a long life with little or no maintenance, but it didn't even include the pad, the pads in the site work, the concrete pad.
That's correct.
So that building, well, it's just the building without a floor, and without the plumbing, which is also in the site work, was $438 a square foot, it's only 608 square feet. So I have questions. There's also, the base building was $234,000, so without seeing the bid documents, there was about $35,000 of extras put on, probably needed, but I don't know, so it is something we're not dropping, but we, obviously, we need to find a different way to construct it.
And I will tell you, and Jason can attest, right now, it is, the amount of work that's out there is ridiculous, it's so much that guys can't even think straight, so I think that that has a lot to do with it as well, and guys are just throwing numbers to see if they stick.
Well, and I understand that, but the thing that irritates me about this particular situation is, if you can't do it, don't throw numbers at me, because that costs us, that costs us money, we're advertising, the engineer time, the bid time, the staff time.
Well, we didn't get two bids, and quite frankly, the low bidder was $90,000 less than the other bidder, so it wasn't-
Yeah, but he's also the one that wanted to charge $8,500 to put a sign in the ground.
I understand, so if you rebid it, you can take the sign out, we'll build our own sign. There's little things like that that you can do, but anyway, that's-
No, and again, it's not-
I'm here to ask for your continued support.
Absolutely, yeah, and I think it's clear as a bell-
We're not going to settle any of this, but-
And the other thing is, obviously, as you and I have been talking about the playground equipment and the party that's interested in trying to work on that, that could be something else that could be maybe worked into that same bid as well, you know, but we'll talk about that as time progresses.
Yeah, I'm not sure that, well, the locations are different, nonetheless, yeah, it could be an opportunity.
Have we ever, as a township, rather than just collecting a fee in lieu of open space, actually made this, like, a project such as this to be a condition of final approval for a land development?
Well, if the development doesn't have the required open space, then there's obviously tot lots and things like that, and they say, oh, well, you can have the wetlands, well, we don't want the wetlands, you know what I mean? So there's ideas, it's, you know, absolutely, that things can be worked on, and there's been developers that have said that in the past, hey, if you don't want the wetlands, you can still have them for free, but if they're not going to cover our, you know, supplied area of recreation, then we'll donate this, or we'll do that, so that happens all the time, so.
Either Tom or I can take this, I think the shortest answer is that the MPC does not contemplate us mandating that developers build off-site improvements, although that would be a wonderful thing.
Yeah, no, I'm talking about if they can't apply so much open space that's usable, and the board says it's open space, but it's not usable open space, and there, we've done it in the past, where we've negotiated.
Right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Keep on going, Luke.
All right, well, so I guess my requested action was to table this, we can just move on, unless you want to take a vote.
We can just move on unless you want to take a vote to literally table this till a presentation can be made by the engineer on some cost-saving.
Right.
I have a question for council. Since it's a real estate contract in reality, is that something that we can discuss in an executive commission, committee item?
Not specifically related to this bid. In other words, we really can't negotiate this bid now?
No, I know, we have to reject it or accept it.
You have to table it, so you get more information from Nate, or reject it, or accept it if you want to, but I guess nobody wants to accept.
So, my question, my real question is, is Nate allowed to meet with us in executive session and save...
Well, I mean, it's just really a staff meeting.
Right.
It's just an administrative meeting.
Okay.
It really wouldn't violate the sunshine.
That was my question. That would save everybody time and move it along quicker.
Or reject it.
Well, we're never going to accept it.
Yeah, I think rejecting it at this point at least opens it up for us changing it and other...
I mean, if you want to wait till Nate comes back to hear his input, that's fine, but I don't think it's going to change.
Might as well just reject it.
I mean, you guys, you did deal with bids a lot. What would you want, would you want it rejected now, or so you can move on?
Reject it, so we can change it.
Okay. I move we reject the bids.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, Luke, for the resignation of Lynda McNeil.
Yes, I'm sorry to report that we received an email from Dr. Lynda McNeil with her resignation from the East Brandyline Township's zoning hearing board. I guess at this time, it would be appropriate for the board to consider accepting her resignation.
It would be.
Want to do a motion to appoint Becky?
Well, I think we just have to reject her for...
And accept.
Motion to accept her resignation.
I'm not going to make the motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Lynda McNeil's resignation as the alternative on the East Brandyline Township's zoning hearing board.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. This is a little out of order, because we had a very long zoning hearing board with three applications at the last meeting of zoning hearing board, and I neglected to indicate to the existing members of the zoning hearing board that we've received an application for a member on the zoning hearing board. So, I have before you a party that's interested in serving on the zoning hearing board. I do not, however, have a recommendation from the potential colleagues on the zoning hearing board that this individual be appointed. So, we've received the volunteer application form for Becky Corbin to serve on the zoning hearing board, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, she would be an alternate.
She would be an alternate and has served on the zoning hearing board in the past.
And her term would be the remaining unfilled portion vacated by Dr. McNeil. Very good. So...
So, you're waiting for the zoning hearing board, or just an alternate, we don't really need to?
Well, there is, there is no rule. The standard procedure is generally, when someone's interested in serving on a committee, they attend the committee, they introduce themselves, and the committee makes a recommendation. But in all cases, the Board of Supervisors is the appointing authority. So, you may either wait for a recommendation from the zoning hearing board, or proceed immediately on this application.
Yeah, and I think she knows enough people on the zoning hearing board, as well as being on it in the past, that we can go ahead and make the recommendation, and if there's any problems down the line, then they can bring it to our attention to clarify paperwork. So, I'll make a motion to appoint Becky Corbin to the zoning hearing board.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, chief.
About a year and a half ago, I had a conversation with the board and advised you that the speed trailer that we possess is about 15 years old. The electronics on it stopped working. We went and purchased a standalone sign and retrofitted it to the trailer, and we've been having issues with the sign, and we're in the process of having the company fix the electronic issues and also reprogram it. But in the meantime, we have been getting swamped with requests for enforcement. We get numerous speeding complaints each week, and after talking with the lieutenant and other members of the department, it's clear that having a second speed trailer is not the worst idea, and it gives us another tool that we can put out in the community. So, I took it upon myself this past week to contact some companies and get some quotes, and these are CoStar vendors, and I received quotes of, they all ran the same, we spec them out the same, but I have a $10,800 quote, a $10,280 quote, and a $7,025 quote for the purchase of a new speed trailer. And the speed trailer is equipped, one with solar panel to keep the batteries charged. It also, all three of them were spec'd with their data collection computer programming, which we would be able to use to collect data on a number of vehicle speeds and do somewhat of a speed study in the neighborhoods. It's a project that I had on my capital reserve list for next year, but I think it's something I'm asking permission from the board to go ahead and do now.
Just out of curiosity, you guys don't ever use the telephone pole portable ones with the solar power?
We haven't purchased those, we haven't considered them. A lot of our developments don't have telephone poles in them, and I don't really want to attach them to utility poles.
You actually need permission. You actually need permission.
Right, so it's one of, and the trailers are very portable for us, so it's really just hooking it up. If you look at our cars, I think half our fleet has hitches on them, so...
Well, I know you said one was seven, one was 10, or two were 10. What's the difference, obviously, between $3,000, but what's...
I honestly don't know. They were spec'd out the same.
They all spec'd the same way?
Yep, yeah.
It's a no-brainer.
And actually, and actually, the one that came in low is at $7,025, which is my recommendation to the board. It is the one company that gave a three-year warranty on the trailer, and the others were one year. And I also spoke to the sales rep today. They also have a, well, if you want to consider New Jersey local, they have a local vendor that they use for any repairs in the region, so we can either take the trailer to them, or they will come out to us to look at it if we ever had a problem with it. So, I just would like to request permission to go ahead, and we do have the money in the capital reserve, we're just doing it a little early, to go ahead and consider purchasing a new speed trailer from, the company is MPH Industries, they're located in Kentucky, and that's for a price of $7,025. And that includes the freight delivery.
That delivered, I was going to say, is that delivered to our door?
Yep.
Could be $3,000 to deliver.
But I'm not driving out there to get it, so I can tell you that. I have paperwork, if you want to say it, or...
Yeah, it's not that far. I have zero problems with it, and again, if it's $7,000 versus $10,000, I think I'd like that even better, so I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the new speed trailer for $7,000. What was it, $7,000?
$25.
$7,025. And that would, that would include delivery?
I'm sorry, I got to be the bean counter in an interrupter's moment. Do you have the CoStar's contract number associated with that bid?
Uh, I got to look for it, Luke.
I would prefer the motion reference the CoStar's contract.
We can make a motion to include...
You know what, they told me they were CoStars, but they didn't give me the contract number.
All right, we'll just include it later.
For three grand, we'll make one up.
We'll make one.
Can we make a motion just to include that?
Yeah, we can, we can reference the vendor and say pursuant to their, to their CoStar's offer, and then the dollar amount, yeah, their CoStar's price of fill-in-the-blank.
So, what was the vendor name, chief?
It is MPH Industries.
From Kentucky?
Yes, they're Owensboro, Kentucky.
All right, so I'll go ahead and change my statement to the authorization to purchase pending the CoStar's bid number from MPH Industries from Kentucky for the speed trailer costing, costing the dollar number of $7,025, delivered. Have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'd like to make a comment on the, on your, your point, Kyle. Those ones that you put on the utility poles, I know in a township where my son lives, yous have a tendency to steal them.
Those little, huh?
They disappear.
Got it.
And they've gone back to trailers.
Harder to walk away with a trailer.
Sure is.
Yeah.
Okay, chief, I'm going to turn it back over to you for Chester County Emergency Response.
Okay, so since around 2004, we have been part of an intermunicipal agreement with 27 other agents or municipalities as members of the Chester County Regional Emergency Response Team, for lack of a terminology, it's our SWAT team, it's our regional SWAT team. Over the last year or so, there's been some discussion between the municipalities about removing the liability and such from the municipalities and creating a commission as an LLC, and I forwarded a document for you guys to look at. Mr. Esti has also seen the document, has an opportunity to talk to the attorneys that were putting this together, and he's had his comments, and they've made the corrections. But, right now, there is a, an article of agreement pending between Trudoff, Downingtown, Schuylkill, Kennett, and East Vincent to become members of the Chester County Emergency Response Commission, and this is authorized under the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. So, what it would do is, we're going to transfer all our memberships from the original agreement to this new commission. It's going to be overseen by a group of chiefs who will manage the team. It opens up the door for us to apply for more federal grants and funding, and it removes any liability from the individual municipalities should the team get sued. The, what did you say the amount of insurance was, it was like?
I think it's $10 million umbrella.
$10 million, we're going to have an umbrella policy. So, what I'm asking the board tonight is to approve...
Well, yeah, we can't approve it yet.
No, no, I was, I meant approve you to move forward with putting the ordinance together for us to become a member. Once these five, I guess you could call them starter municipalities, approve the agreement, then the other municipalities will move forward with their approvals.
And Trudoff, apparently, has already approved it, and then the other four municipalities are, it's supposed to be on their agendas at the beginning of August. So, assuming all the originating members approve, then we can put together an ordinance to become a member at your probably second August meeting.
I have a big question. Why an LLC? That's, why not a nonprofit? I've never heard of an LLC in a governmental situation.
I don't know if it's an LLC or not.
That's a whole story.
Huge thing, so any, any money left over from dues becomes taxable.
Yeah, I mean, this was...
We originally talked about it was supposed to be, maybe it's not an LLC now. As I said, there's been discussions going back and forth.
Well, that's an important point to me. I don't want to, I want to know more about the corporate, corporate structure. I mean, you, you, a nonprofit can be a corporation, but it's a nonprofit corporation. I don't think a nonprofit can be an LLC.
I mean, frankly, I don't think this agreement even creates an entity. It's just a legal entity. It's just something called the Chester County Emergency Response Commission, and it's formed under Intergovernmental Cooperation Act. So, I'll look into that.
Right, because they don't even need to be a nonprofit. It's just a commission, because...
Right.
The chief mentioned a couple of key things there, that are covered under the Intergovernmental Unit.
Right.
So, I, and an LLC...
Did you, did you see this?
I went through the draft briefly, but I was so confused, I was so hung up on why is it an LLC that I moved, I moved on. I mean, even, I know PennDOT set some things up. I'm a business manager of the signing trust, but it was set up as a trust with PennDOT as the beneficiary, so I'm just, that's not the right form here, but I, for the life of me, I can't figure out.
Everything references the commission.
Yeah, I don't think, I never saw the term...
Everything refers, yeah.
I never saw anything in here about LLC.
Okay.
The chief might know that from some conversation.
That's what we talked about in the beginning.
Right, so, but it's, it's just a unincorporated entity called a commission.
Right, I think, I think that's what it is.
And that's all it is.
All it has to have is an agreement.
And that's what this is.
As long as, as long as, as long as all the members are governments.
Intergovernmental agreement. Exactly what it is.
All right, well, it's not an LLC, don't be calling it an LLC. That's, that's a for-profit corporation. Unless you guys are making a profit.
Well, they're going to be going, yeah, just grants money, and, yeah, they're going to build a few minutes.
No, it's like, make a profit and give away a trip every year to the...
All right, but you're, you're asking us to have Tom do a little bit more...
Right, just make sure what, what form of business it is.
Yeah, check, yeah.
And before we, and...
And prepare the orders.
I mean, obviously, we would approve it, but I want to know that it's an appropriate format that we're approving.
Understood.
All right, you don't need a formal...
No.
Yeah, okay. Subdivision in zoning applications, I don't believe we have any tonight. Ordinances and resolutions for consideration done as well. Now, I'm going to open it up for public comment on non-agenda items. Ladies first, sorry. If we were playing Price is Right, I think she had her hand up first.
I know, I just have something really quick. Do you need my name? Yes. Oh, my name is Roseanne Boylan. B as in Boy, O-Y-L-A-N. I live at 131 Ballinger Road. For those who don't know where that's at, it's the first house on the left off of 322. My concern is, and I maybe shouldn't even bring it up here, teenagers walking from Apple Cross over to wherever they're going. I guess they're going to the shopping plaza, I'm not really sure. I don't know if your officers have seen any of them walking down the highway. Sometimes there's four, six, eight, so, and sometimes they cut across our property. Now, I don't have a problem with them cutting across our property and walking through Martin's Field, which I talked to your grandson yesterday about it, and they said as long as they stay away from their windows. My concern is one of them getting hit by a car, because there's no sidewalk or even a full-size, you know, extra lane there, and so, and I would hope that nothing happens before somebody decides to do something about it. My other concern is they are walking very deep into our property, and I have a very unfriendly dog, and so I don't know where my legal ramifications are as far as my dog bites one of them, because she is out there sometimes. I admit, she's not very friendly. She's friendly to us, but not strangers, and do I put a sign up, beware of dog? Is that, keep me from legally getting sued if they get bit by her? She has teeth, and I think she will bite them. Also, they have come close enough that I've been sitting in my dining room having dinner, and they're within 10 feet of my front, my back window. I don't, you know, I think they're just going over to the thing with their backpacks and stuff. I just don't want to see one of them get killed or something worse on the highway, and there's no shoulder there. I've spoken to Kathy Kettley. They're walking along her wall where her barn is. She's afraid that one of them might fall in there. Is that something I need to contact PennDOT about possibly having something put in? Or how far are we from this development behind us, where they can cross over and get on their path? path?
It's in the, they just submitted their final land development application for it to review now.
Yeah, I read something in the last planning commission minutes about, or the one before that, and about the Army Corps and the pond and this and that and this and that. And, you know, a checkoff list about this long. And so, I've asked my brother about it because, you know, he's an engineer for Westbury anyway. And I can't get any, nobody seems to know why, what's holding it up or what's going on. So, I mean, that would certainly help if they could cross over. Once they leave Apple Cross, they're, they're stuck. They're either on the highway or they're on our property.
Are you saying they...
So, they come out of this development, they cross through my yard, and then they cut across.
Right, cross through your yard, crossing here. Right, right. I, I, so, how many feet are they cutting off? Is it like a hundred feet? I mean, they're going right through the, that's an alfalfa field, isn't it?
It is. It's an alfalfa field.
Right, so they're, they're walking through the alfalfa field?
Walking through that.
They were, they were walking through that when it wasn't as tall. Now that it's taller, they have, they're spending more time on the highway.
It's still doing damage.
I'm just worried that my dog's going to eat them.
There won't be no sidewalk.
And there's going to be a path?
Oh, but we got the handicap ramps.
We have it in the corner, but up for her houses, there is the sidewalk. So, if you're looking at the plan, Ron, we're eliminating this. Nothing going from, from the corner of 322 all the way up.
And the only way you could for, force them not walking is that there are no trespassing signs up.
Well, we, it's private property. We don't really have any control.
Right.
Well, you put no trespassing.
I mean, I think the only thing I could, well, that's up to the private.
So, I'll put up a no trespassing sign. I'll put up a beware of dog sign. And...
Actually, you don't need any signs anymore. You use the purple paint.
Oh, yeah, what can I put it on? I don't have anything.
Oh, no, we use it all.
We use it all the time, but our fishing equipment.
They can't even, they can't even not throw trash. They, you come back in the store, and there's trash all over my yard. And then we go out and we pick it up. You know, but I, what I'm worried about is I don't have a friendly dog. Any of the cops who have been in my house will tell you that. So, so there's no path going along 322?
Uh, not in that area, no.
Really?
It's going to go down and around through the development.
It's the trail for Apple Cross.
Okay, well...
Yeah, they should stay.
I will come in two weeks and look at the plan because I was just wondering what's going on with that anyway. But I'm just concerned with these kids walking down the highway.
That'd be the first Wednesday of August.
First Wednesday? Yeah, I'll, I'll look on the website.
Did, I'm, I'm sorry. Did you, did you speculate what the destination, where do you think they were, you think they were going to the shopping center?
They're going to the shopping center.
Oh, they're going.
Okay.
Where do you think they're going, Officer, Chief?
It's a Dairy Queen.
Okay.
I mean, there's not too many places. They're not going down to Mapleview to play in all the open space.
Yeah, but the, the only, the only, my thought process is...
My other thought process, excuse me, was that they're going to the development off of North Guthriesville Road, too, maybe passing through.
Yeah, they're going to the shopping center.
If they're going to the shopping center, they're crossing right across it or in the shopping center. Over here, if they're going behind her house and, and over that way, they're, they're actually adding steps. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, meaning, meaning if they're going this way and then over, that doesn't make sense.
Well, what they're doing is they're coming out the, the entrance up there. Not, they're not walking all the way to the barn.
They're not coming across.
Okay.
They're not walking to the barn. They're coming out the entrance across from Mrs. Colvin's house and then coming across our properties and then cutting through our properties.
Cutting it this way because of the shopping center.
Okay, so they're coming right at Empire, the, the intersection with Empire?
Correct.
Got it, okay. Well, I, I, you know, I can say that there is a master plan for connecting the trail network in Apple Cross to the shopping district. And that includes trails that may not yet be online across the street over here in Mapleview.
Okay.
There's, there's a, there's called for an asphalt trail, and I think they've got it roughed in right now.
Okay, good. Well, maybe not a hall.
And then that would have a connection to the proposed giant.
Right.
Which would then in turn have a connection to the, to the, to the existing shopping center.
Okay, that's, that's good.
And, and there is, there is a trail network in the proposed Weaver tract. They call it Brandywine Walk.
Right.
But it may not connect the dots that you're describing as cut through.
Okay. So, hopefully, they do use that and get across there and go around rather than walk down the highway because as you can see, there's no shoulder.
Right.
That they're really, and then there's six or eight of them walking at one time. And then you got people on their cell phones and everything and not paying attention. It wouldn't take much to wipe one of them out.
They're all customers, so I...
So, thank you for, for bringing that.
Thank you. And I'll put some signs up.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else for, for non-agenda? Yes, Bruce?
Good evening. Bruce Rawlings, Planning Commission. About a month ago, a month and a half ago, we had a nice group from Maple, Mapleview come in, and we talked about parking and all that. And I haven't seen anything back from them. And have you seen anything?
It's a million-dollar question.
But also, in that particular development, a week or two after that, the site got cleaned up. All the equipment's gone. The whole site is cleaned, stabilized, and all the construction just stopped. It's concerning me.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, exactly. I think the market has a lot to play on that right now. The interest rates jumped up, and I think, I know Toll Brothers just started laying people off. Now, that's not a toll development, but within the last month, Toll Brothers started laying people off. And I think that's a sign of the times that everybody with the interest rates is probably playing the wait-and-see approach, which is exactly why I think we just got this super high bid for the bathroom as well.
Right. But also there, we have a through road going through there. That road is open now. Not dedicated and not, and not even paved all the way. And everybody's using that road going through there. It doesn't have a finished asphalt finish to it. I don't know if the school buses will be using it. So, I don't know what, what your responsibility, Chief, is to take a look at that when there, people are going through. Can they use it as a through road now?
Well, I tell you, it only hurts the builder. The longer that that wear course is on there right now, it's getting traffic on it, and it eventually will start to crack. So, it's not in their favor to let that sit too long. So, I will tell you, I'm sure that they're well aware that they're going to have some serious issues.
So, that basin that you're talking about removing is dug, not filled in, not, so, it would be nice to know what's going on with them.
Yeah, and Luke, I, to my knowledge, we've got no, no updates worthwhile, anyway.
The applicant will be in at the planning commission, Don Sample. I'm going to, I'm going to, if I'm allowed, I'm going to ask him those direct questions. I mean, I think it affects the, the whole development, I mean, the whole township. So, I think it's important to know.
Mapleview actually, Mapleview actually pulled on June 30th, five building permits.
But even the construction is down. I mean, you look at it, there's not as many...
But they put the full five new permits.
I know. And you're, Matt, you were saying something?
I met with PennDOT and Don Samples earlier today, and they are looking to finish the, the PennDOT right-of-way work with, on North Guthriesville Road. And they also are going to put barrels across the roadway at North Guthriesville Road. They talked to PennDOT about it, and PennDOT doesn't have any issues with it one way or the other.
So, they're going to close off the, their access.
Yeah, to cut off the through traffic. And the reason is, like you said, it's still construction site. They have construction vehicles sitting on the roadway. And so, that's, that's the main reason, is to stop vehicles from coming through a construction site.
I think they also need to put up a temporary no-through-traffic sign to warn people because you know what's going to happen. They're going to go down all the way to the end, hit the barrels, U-turn, and then speed out of there. So, I think a little bit more needs to get done if that's the case. And I think Don needs to, if you guys feel free to address this when you see him, if, if he doesn't give you an update, time is of the essence. If they're going to do this barrel process for the winter, that's not going to fly.
Well, um, yeah, so, so in, in addition to the fact it's a construction site referenced by the roadmaster, there, there's also traffic calming features of the finished plan that would need to be installed. Specifically, there's speed tables associated with that that would not be built until the final wear course is put down. But if I can follow up, why is the timeline of before snowfall, given that it's a private road, not yet offered for dedication? What, what is your priority to get it resolved before the winter?
No, I'm saying it's not, it's not for, I don't want people going down there, turning around, driving back out, and then we're going to be dealing with the speeding on the street because we're going to get the phone calls on that, even though it's not dedicated to us yet. That's the first part. The second part is, as I said, the builder would, would clearly know the amount of more traffic that's on that road, trucks, whatever, is going to deplete their, their subbase, and then it's going to be a problem for finish coat, which we are responsible to check on, to make sure of the code. And if it's all cracked by that point, then they're going to have a problem. So, I would think that they're going to hurry anyway on that.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, I, I understand the connection now. I, I, I was, I was a little confused because that has not yet been offered for dedication. And therefore, the condition is, I will say, not, I won't say of no concern, but of less concern to me. It's private property. Yeah, okay.
Yep. Okay.
I have two things.
Yeah.
Last planning commission, we had a really good meeting. We had some interested parties on, in the audience in reference to joining the board. We had one person decline it because he just has too much to, to do in life, so he's not going to do it. And we have another person who's, I'm going to ask to come and sit through it. I'm going to ask the board to make a recommendation to have four people come and join us on a unofficial, non-voting members. So, we can start grooming, grooming them for being a planning commission meeting. So, good, good people. Happy to see the interest in the, in the community, which is, it's been a while. So, so unless you want me to handle it a different way, that's how I'm...
No, I think that's...
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else for non-agenda?
I, I have a question on the planning commission, Bruce. You don't have to get up again. Do you have any concerns that eleven people are too many? I know in the past, past, when I was a non-voting member, we limited it to nine, even though we could have had more just to, you had seven voting and two non-voting.
It's been a tendency that we've been having five show-off meetings, which it leaves myself and four others this big recommendation. I think...
Okay, so you're worried about having enough board, proper attendance?
I want to build up a reserve.
Okay.
To be able to...
Have input?
Right. And I think the planning commission can be up to nine members, too, if we wanted to change that.
We're up to seven in our ordinance, but you probably could if the MPC allows it.
Yeah, I, I think that's exactly what Bruce is, our ordinance, our local ordinance says there'd be seven and up to four non-voting members. But I do believe the MPC would allow more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, there's no notices that I'm aware of. The board will meet an executive session to, tonight after following this meeting to discuss personnel issues. And I guess it would also qualify for legal, but definitely personnel. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.